To the computer. All right. Hello, everybody. Thank you for being here. The Muskogee County Democrats are very happy to be able to host these forums, to let everybody have an opportunity to hear from the candidates, especially during this time of our social distancing, where it's a lot more difficult to get out and speak face-to-face to people. I'm really grateful that we have Zoom to enable this kind of thing to happen. So tonight, we are hosting the District Four City Council candidates. We have Elaine Gillespie and Toya Tucker. And so let me just tell you a little bit about how the day will or the evening will go. We'll have opening statements from both. And then the Muskogee County Dems have a couple of questions that we submitted in advance to the candidates, and we will ask for their responses. And then we'll open up questions to our viewers. And once we get to that point, you can either type out the question that you would like, and I'll ask it, or if you just put "question," I'll be happy to unmute you so that you can ask the question on camera yourself, whichever works best for you. People will be coming in as we go, so I'll be allowing them in, and we'll just go from there. And then after that, we'll have closing statements, and we'll head out. We need to be done by about 6:45, 6:50 or so. So that'll be the... I'm sorry, let me unmute you, Toya. But I want... Okay, gotcha. What time do you need to be done?
Eight.
Sorry, you're right. Sorry.
Seven forty-five, not six forty-five.
Yes, seven forty-five. So yeah, just to allow a little time to transition. So anyway, since you are unmuted now, I might as well, I'm going to pin you, and I'll have you go first with your opening statement to our viewers.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thanks, Laura, for putting together... Well, you and the Muskogee County Dems for putting together this virtual forum. My name is Toya Tucker. Again, I'm running for City Council, District Four. A little bit about me. I was born here in Columbus, Georgia. I grew up in Carver Heights and graduated from Carver High School. After graduating in 1996, I joined the Air Force. It had always been a dream of mine to join the military, and I made it a goal. I worked for several four-star generals. I've been awarded by the Secretary of Defense for some logistical work that I did to save some Americans. And I just gave it my all in the Air Force. In the Air Force, we have a... In our performance evaluation, we have a block for volunteerism. So you have to be involved in your community. And it might be sending care packages to soldiers downrange or working with mentoring or tutoring. So when I came back home in 2014, I knew that it was something that... It was a goal of mine to be actively involved in my community. I initially started with NAACP. I was heavily involved with Girls Inc. And then I started into this political realm. In 2016, I worked on Evelyn Turner-Pugh's campaign. And in 2018, I was campaign manager for Danielle Forte. My goal has always been to make my community better. Right now, I'm the co-captain of my neighborhood watch. I'm superintendent of Sunday School at Revelation Missionary Baptist Church. And I feel like I'm a community leader. I'm also the director of membership and outreach for the Muskogee County Dems. I have put together many events for the community, and I stay actively involved, like going to city council meetings. Everyone, whether it is in person or virtually, I have been attending since 2014. I've also been involved in Georgia, the Georgia legislative sessions, advocating for different things in reference to the school-to-prison pipeline, just ensuring that we don't put more kids, you know, in the prison system. So basically, I want to do the same thing and continue to serve in District Four and to do things like community cleanup projects or mentoring and doing more crime prevention in our neighborhoods, because we do have a crime problem in Muskogee County and definitely in District Four. Every weekend on Sunday, Carver Park is filled with many, many people carrying weapons and shooting guns. And I get calls every Sunday to basically address things. I'm actually... I've actually been working for the district without even getting a check, and I would do it for free if I had to. So my name is Toya Tucker, and I'm running for City Council, District Four. And I'm asking for the individuals that are in District Four to vote for me.
Thank you so much, Toya. Thanks for that statement. Now, I'm going to unmute Elaine. It looks like it's almost there. She was giving me a little bit of this problem yesterday. Here we go. You are unmuted, or you should be. Did you just push the button?
I pushed the button.
There you go. All right, Ms. Elaine Gillespie.
Hello, my name is Doris Elaine Weaver Gillespie. I am a product of the tri-community. I was born in Columbus, Georgia, during this education era. I was reared in Phoenix City, Alabama. My first permanent party duty station was B Company Support Battalion, 197th Infantry Brigade, Kelly Hill, Georgia, which doesn't exist right now. I'm a former Columbus firefighter. I am a former... Where I worked in procurement. I am a high-angle rescue. I am a state and nationally certified firefighter. I worked on the direction of three deputy chiefs in procurement and budgetary issues with the city of Columbus. I am a former member of the Muskogee County Tax Commissioner staff, where I wrote the original draft for a property tax manual. I am also... I just retired from the federal government as a field representative for Congressman Sanford Bishop, where I served 18 years and as many as 11 counties at one time. I was served as a liaison for him between state and federal organizations. I have served as a liaison with him since 2003 with the commanding general and with all the commanding generals at Fort Benning, the garrison commanders, and the deputy garrisons commanders. I have served on the House of Heroes Board, the Fort Mitchell National Cemetery, the Stewart Community Home Board, the Family Connections in Chattahoochee, Marion Crawford, Peach, Webster, Carroll, probably any 11 of them, in Randolph Counties. I have been affiliated with state and federal organizations, so I know where to go when you have a question. I might not be able to give you the answer at that moment, but I have the resources and the knowledge to reach out to those people. I want to serve the citizens of the Fourth District, because that's been my life. I've been in the military. Like, I've served my federal... I failed to serve the government, our country, and I've also served the city through the congressional office. And I want to continue that service by giving my all. This is not a paycheck for me. This is a service for me. I want to make sure that the kids, the young adults today, remember the times that I had in Carver Park, when we used to go and have great times, when we used to go fishing, when we went to Sunday School picnics there. Same thing. I've never used Shirley Winston Park, but I have fond memories of Carver Park. And we need our children, our young adults, to have somewhere to go, somewhere to be, somewhere they can call their own. I want to make sure that the people of the Fourth District get their fair share of the economic growth of this county and this state. That's why I want to be your representative.
Thank you, Elaine. And to the both of you, thank you so much for having the courage to run, for taking the time and the energy. It's a sacrifice, and it is service. And it takes a really bold, brave, caring person to do that. And the fact that we have two female veterans running, I mean, that's just a fantastic set of options that we have here. So thanks for both being here. And Elaine, since you are already unmuted, I'm going to keep you... Or I'm going to have you answer this first question. You're the first. And that is... And this has really become... All the questions that we had for any of our candidates have all come back to this now, and it's kind of a newer thing. But what ideas do you have for adjusting the city's budget in response to the economic crisis caused by COVID-19?
Well, first of all, I can't give you a really realistic answer unless I actually see the budget. I would hope that we would not have to cut salaries, because with the cost of living increasing and the cost of insurance payments, I think that should be a last resort. But I think that I would have to be at the table so I could have privilege to all of the information that I feel that I could make a sound decision. I remember when I worked for the city, when our insurance policies were $15 every two weeks. I'm pretty sure that's a very, very lost memory for a lot of city employees. But as I said, I can't give you a realistic answer without actually physically looking at that budget.
Okay, thank you very much. And now I'm going to unmute and pin. Toya, same question to you. What ideas do you have for being able to adjust the city's budget, seeing as we are really facing a crisis economically?
Okay, so the city council is currently conducting the FY2 2021 budget review. The budget is actually out there. The proposed budget is out there for all to view, including all of you that are online. So we know that we are in these unprecedented times, so there are many sacrifices that are being made by the department heads. However, as I said, I watch all city council meetings and also the hearings. And Metro has been awarded over $700,000 in grant funds. And Isaiah Hulley actually proposed that all department heads look for other grants to help with the budget during this crisis. However, I do agree that it is best for us to be in that setting that way. You understand more of the budget process, because it's questions that's being asked and questions that are being proposed, such as Chief Born. He wants to spend probably like over a million dollars on new police vehicles. It's also the sheriff wants pay raises, and they're going to decrease positions by three to ensure that they get these pay raises. So it's all things, all kinds of ways that we can make sacrifices and ensure that we have a balanced budget. But as I said, that budget is online right now, and you can review it and the grant processes and taking advantage of the cares right now would be a great thing for us in the budget.
Okay, thank you very much, Toya. Now, you will get the opportunity to answer the next question first. And that is, "Can you commit to supporting and voting for a non-discrimination ordinance, which includes sexual orientation and gender identity in public employment, private employment, and public accommodations?" And just, you know, yes or no, and then tell us your thoughts on that. That's for you, Toya.
That's for me.
Yeah. So Elaine got to answer first before, and so...
You explained it. So I actually just spoke with Jeremy Hoffs today. I am in full support of a non-discrimination ordinance. I know that Walker Garrett, Councilor Walker Garrett, he is actually in the works of putting together a non-discrimination ordinance, and he needs support from council members. So that's the reason why they reached out to us, who are, you know, candidates, to see where we stand with this non-discrimination ordinance. And I wholeheartedly support this non-discrimination ordinance. And it's very personal for me. Some people, you know, may know, and some people may not. But my mom is in the LGBT community. I grew up with her, and I saw the adversities that she faced. And therefore, I know that this right here is a human rights issue and also a civil rights issue. And no one should be denied housing, you know, employment, or any type of services because of their sexuality. Therefore, I'm wholeheartedly in this, and I hope that it gets passed, because right now, it's only four cities in Georgia that has a non-discrimination ordinance, and the state does not have a non-discrimination ordinance.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Toya. And now I'm going to unmute Elaine. And... I think you might have... Oh, no. There you go.
I would wholeheartedly support this ordinance. I think discrimination, as Toya said, is unconstitutional. I do would like to say that as far as any state, private, that would probably have to fall under the state regulatory system based on the fact that we have a Georgia Labor Commission. And I would lobby to those commissioners, I would lobby to our state legislators to support such an ordinance.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Now, you will... You're the next person to answer first. And that next question is, "Would you support the building of more bicycle and sidewalk paths in Columbus, especially in working-class areas, as well as the reduction of car traffic on Broadway to reduce bodily harm to bicyclers and foot traffic and reduce emissions?" Boy, we have a lot in there, but yes. How do you feel about that?
The answer is yes. I would support it. I meant, it's... First of all, it's about our environment. Second of all, it's part of making sure that our future is safe, because our children use those sidewalks. Adults use those sidewalks and riding trails as recreation. And so it's a healthy choice as well. So like I said, I'm not long-winded. Yes, I'll support it.
Thank you, Elaine. And...
I'm going to mute it.
Okay, let me just... I'm going to pin you down here so everybody can see you. Okay.
So the protection of clean air and water is one of my top priorities. It is a priority that we reduce the foot traffic and reduce emissions. One of my platforms is community revitalization. And I believe that we need vibrant and connected communities. So I support bicycle additions and sidewalk paths. We need better streetscapes. And when I say sidewalk paths, I have already petitioned one of the directors for us to upgrade our sidewalks on Steamwell Road. I had one... My grandmother's best friend's son was killed in a car accident on Steamwell Road. So if we do beautification projects and streetscapes and add, you know, proper sidewalks, these things will not only benefit us as far as the reduction of emissions, it will beautify our communities and give us a sense of pride. So I do support the bicycle and sidewalk paths.
Great, thank you. This question to me is, you know, we've had a... In the last year, year and a half, we've definitely had quite a few accidents where pedestrians or bicyclists have been killed or injured. And so I appreciate that question. Okay. Then the last question... This is the last question that we have for the candidates. And so I wanted to give everybody else a heads up. If you have a question for both or either of the candidates, please either write it in the chat box, which you'll find at the bottom, but then you'll see it on the side pull-up, or just put "question," and I'll unmute you, and you can ask it in person. So anyway, think about that while I ask the last question. "How can the city better address its slumlord issue?" And that's going to be for you, Toya.
Okay. So while I understand that Columbus has 44 boards, commissions, and/or authorities, I do believe that we need a board to address our slumlord issue. If elected, I would propose that we create a Housing and Resident Safety Committee. The goal of the committee is to reach out to residents, gauge the strength of Columbus' existing laws on housing and code enforcement. If some landlords need to be held accountable, then we will have this structure to help council hold those landlords accountable, you know, for these issues. This a-hoc committee will meet with stakeholders, community members, and city staff to determine the strengths and weaknesses in our rental enforcement. The committee will produce a recommendation on how to beef up local laws and align them with the House Bill 346, which prohibits retaliation by a landlord against a tenant for taking certain actions. Under that House Bill 346, if it authorized a tenant to recover from the landlord a civil penalty of one month's rent and $500 plus court costs and reasonable attorney fees. So I really do think that we really need to address this slumlord issue. I was at city council before the pandemic, and an individual came up, and she spoke on the public agenda about such issue. And we need to have strict laws and better resources for our tenants for these slumlords.
Great. Thank you, Toya. And...
Well...
Elaine, to you.
I think we can utilize some of our city employees that we have in the tax assessor's office and the folks in our inspections and codes. They come around and they assess these properties. I think when they assess these properties, they need to give notice to those slumlords, especially if those residents are complaining. We talk about we need to reduce our... We've got to find a way to reduce our budget. But we need to be able to use what we already have in play so that we're not creating any unnecessary expenses. I think because as part of the tax commissioner's office, we had to work with the tax assessor's office and inspection and codes. So I think those are the people that we need to have on board, because they are professionals, and that's cost-effective.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions that they want to ask our two candidates? Until... You know, until we do move forward, until we get... Oh, Harry does. Let me unmute you. Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So quick question. This has been a good forum so far. So also talking about housing. So one movement that's been gaining credence in like several major cities, especially out west, is the YMB movement, or "Yes, in My Backyard" as opposed to "Not in My Backyard." And one of the things that they push for is greater densification in building more affordable multifamily housing in closer to public transit and closer to like those sidewalks and bike paths that we were talking about earlier. And so is that something... Would that be also a priority? Because I know that like the building of affordable housing closer to pedestrian space and closer to public transit is something that may grind some of the gears of more suburban dwellers and what have you. But is that something that the... As counselors, you would look into for expanding that especially like net-zero energy housing to make sure that like increasing supply of housing in Columbus proper? Thank you.
Thank you. Elaine, do you want... Since you're unmuted, do you want to take that? Or do you want to...
I would support anything that would make more affordable housing available. I mean, I think especially if it's cost-efficient for the city. And if it increases health streetscape and sidewalks, I think that's a wonderful idea. I've seen that program, and I studied that program while I worked for the congressman. But and I think it's an excellent idea. I think that we need to make sure that when we talk about affordable housing, we're not talking about just putting people in slumlord homes. It needs to be homes that are that you and I would like to live in, not like the house that's behind me, where the lady pays $430 a month, but she has no insulation in her home. You know, I think when we say affordable housing, we need to make sure that it's quality affordable housing.
Great, agreed. Toya, to you.
Also, I do support affordable housing. I know that Kathy Williams is working on a project, Our Victory Drive, for affordable housing. They purchased so many acres of land to actually provide affordable housing. Although there's no projects over here in District Four, if there were projects, I would support affordable housing. We need more affordable housing in Columbus, Georgia.
Thank you.
May I interject for one moment?
Sure.
There is an affordable housing project on Dorsey Drive in Forest Park. There are supposed to be nine houses that's supposed to be built probably when the funding is raised, probably in the next two years. That project is through... Oh, my goodness. The sign is... I just saw this sign again yesterday, because I put signs on. Oh, my goodness. It's not Kathy, because I worked on Kathy's board before. Oh, my goodness, out of America's Georgia.
It'll come to you.
Out of America's Georgia, yeah. It's something that we do every day.
Habitat for...
Habitat for Humanity, that's right. There are nine new houses that are slated to be built on the corner of Dorsey Drive and Forest Park.
Great, great. And I really like... Harry, I appreciate that. I had never heard of that concept of "Yes, in My Backyard." You know, I think that that's a challenge here in Columbus when you have somebody who wants to make a development in a part of town that maybe isn't used to a mixed-use kind of, you know, houses and apartments and that kind of thing. So I think that's a real interesting concept. So anyway, I am going to go to the next question, and that is from Andrea. And says to the candidates, "Thank you for participating. Here is a question about an issue that the city council has a great deal of power to change. What do each of the candidates think about bail reform? Would they be willing to fight for ROR instead of cash bail?" And please clarify... And I have been to a couple of different briefings on cash bail and that whole process, but I can't remember what ROR is. So someone will enlighten me, I'm sure. "Based on own reconnaissance, yes." Okay. I'm going to go over to... Just because you got the last question first, Elaine. I'm going to go over to Toya.
Okay. So when I said that I advocate for human rights and civil rights, one of the things that I do every year is participate in Justice Day. And we advocate for our state legislators to basically end this cash bail, because basically it's saying that if I'm poor, then I can't get out of jail. You know, then I have to stay in jail because I don't have the money to get out of jail. So yes, I would support the... To end cash bail. I actually have a big button that says "End Cash Bail." Far as the ROR, as I've been to several events down with Judge McBride and NAACP, that was something that actually took place last year that we were able to decrease the amount of individuals that were in Muskogee County Jail. So what was done was Judge McBride sent a list of all the individuals in their arrests, and we went through, and we worked on... And we went through and we worked on decreasing that amount of number, the, decreasing the number of, um, inmates that were down there in, in jail that could be released on our, our, our. So these are things that I, I have actively advocated for as a, a private citizen. And if elected, I would definitely, um, advocate for, um, as an elected official.
Thank you, Toya, and Elaine.
I, I would advocate for this as well. And, and it's, and it's, it goes without saying, this is something that has been a privilege for the rich because they were being, have been able to bond out, whereas you are bringing home a fifteen hundred dollar check, um, a month, you can't do a cash bond. And this is really discriminatory economically. And so I would support, uh, this, this program.
I agree, thank you for, um, asking that question, Andrea. A lot of us have been to a few different forums on this, on this problem. So, and just think what it would do for the, you know, the people in, in jail. You would not, I mean, it wouldn't, could release, you know, definitely reduce crowding, um, for sure. So anyway, thank you very much. Any other questions? If not, I'm gonna move forward to just letting, um, each candidate have a few minutes since we, um, okay, one more question, and this is a good one. It was something I was gonna ask or just kind of a, a variation of that. And also, um, Elaine, what city council committees would each of you prefer to be on?
I would prefer the budget committee because I think that's where the heart of the city is. I think that's where we, with the notes and votes of the community, where they'll receive their fair share. Uh, you would be there firsthand to know what's going where, who gets what. When, um, an old politician told me, it's all about the money. Who gets the money? And I, we need, I need to make sure that the fourth district get their share of that money.
Great, thank you. And to Toya, how about you? Which committees would you prefer?
Okay, so I would actually prefer, prefer the, um, budget committee. And as I said, I've, I've actually been watching the, um, budget committee hearings, for the last month, um, we, they had one on May nineteen. And it's, it is, um, we, we do need to be aware of who's getting what and how the money is distributed, um, across the districts. So, um, the, the budget committee would be definitely something that I would prefer to be on.
Okay. Thank you very much. And, um, all right, Harry has a quick question and we're gonna just, uh, uh, ask it quickly and then go right into, we'll close questions for now. We'll go right into our closing statement. So Toya, this is for you first. And that is, what are your thoughts on a police review board for Columbus?
Can, um, Harry kind of go in further when he, what does he mean by police review board?
Harry, I just tried to unmute you, you can feel free to, um, to briefly, um, explain.
Okay, so up in Nashville, uh, they became like, I think, the most recent city to pa- uh, to pass, like by referendum, a police review board for the city of Nashville. And basically it would review complaints, uh, made against the police departments regarding, um, conduct, especially alleged misconduct. And so I don't know if Atlanta ha- has a police review board. But Columbus having one, I think, would also allow some sort of like, uh, public scrutiny to, uh, like organized public scrutiny, uh, towards the, uh, you know, towards the police to make sure that the police, uh, are held accountable and everything because accountability would be good. So thank you.
Thank you, Harry.
Okay, still on me?
Yes, yep, still on you.
So as, as far as this police review board, um, Harry, I would support it. However, I, I would like to see, um, I would like to review what other cities are doing with this, um, with this review board, with the police review board. And the reason why I say that is because our, um, our relationship with, relationship with law enforcement, sometimes, sometimes it's very negative. And, um, yes, we do have, I, I do believe that, um, law enforcement needs more sensitivity training. They need more training on how that, how to handle, um, you know, individuals with autism or, um, or, um, other mental, mental health, you know, illnesses, um, even domestic violence. Um, I'm a survi- I'm a survivor of domestic violence and it was times when police, a police officer actually came out and they scrutinized me as the victim instead of the, the person that, that has punched me in the eye, you know? So, um, and it was, and this was in Montgomery, Alabama. And I was, and it was hard to go and file a complaint, you know, against a police officer. However, I, I do want to ensure that, that, um, that we maintain a positive relationship with our law enforcement. And at the same time, I do support the police review board because I've been on the other side where, um, you know, it's, it's been me that had to file a complaint against an officer. And this officer, um, that was in Montgomery was very hostile, not only to me, but to, to other people of color. And I, I just didn't understand it. I would see him, you know, harassing people all throughout Montgomery, Alabama, you know, for, for no apparent reason. But yes, I do, um, I, I would like to review this, uh, uh, a little more, Harry, but I do, um, support the police review board.
Thank you, Toya, and now, um, over to Elaine.
Well, I guess Toya and I have a little more in common than we thought. I am a, uh, a wife. I was, uh, abused by my husband. And, um, I had the, it was, um, I was relieved when Columbus PD came to my rescue. They were professional and, um, they took care of me as well as the other public safety members that came. I would, I would support a public safety review board. But I would not just for the police department. It's like I said, public safety.
Yeah.
Everybody has to be held accountable, not just Columbus PD, the, the sheriff's department, uh, all public safety entities.
Great, thank you, thank you. Okay, so now it's, uh, closing statements and Elaine, since, since I have you here, if you would, um, if you would give yours and then, um, and then Toya hers and then we will finish up.
Well, like I said, I'm not long winded. I have been serving, serving my country and my community all my life. Right now, I want to serve the citizens of the fourth district directly. I want to be there for them. I want to be accessible for them. I am going to serve the entire district. I want to make sure that our children have the facilities that they need to have a, a peaceful life in Carver Park or a, a joyous day, not to be scared. I live in Forest Park and I hear the gunshots every day. I don't get calls, I don't have to get calls, I hear them. And I want to make sure that, like I said, we get our economic share of, of the growth in Columbus, Georgia.
Thank you very much, thanks Elaine for being here. And finally, uh, Toya, your closing statement.
Again, I want to thank all of you for being in this forum, you know, tonight. And thank you Laura, and thank you, um, and say my, my sister, um, who, who I'm learning, we do have a lot in common. Not just veterans, but being survivors of, um, domestic violence. As an elected official, I will strive to, um, be accessible and also accountable to District Four and also Columbus, Georgia. Because when you sit on that council, your one vote, you know, counts for all the districts. So, um, you know, I want to make sure that I'm doing my due diligence for District Four and also the city of Columbus. I will strive to, um, be accessible, um, and transparent. I will definitely work hard, um, for the citizens. And as a parent, um, I, I do want the amenities, um, for, for my children, you know, and eventually grandchildren later on in life, to be able to walk up the street and go to Shirley B and actually have an active pool that they can go swim in or feel like, um, you know, at times I don't even want my daughter to, to go outside because of the crime outside and, you know, surrounding neighborhood. So I want to have a, a, a quality, you know, I want people to experience a quality of life where they are, are happy to say that District Four is their home. Um, I want to be here for, for the remainder of my life. I'm, I retired from the Air Force. I'm thankful that I don't have to clock in to, to any job. I can do this full time and I want to serve. And I'm, I'm praying, um, that I, I can earn the vote of the citizens of District Four.
Great, thank you so much, Toya, for being here as well. And thanks to everybody that attended. This has been a great little, um, like chat between, um, some of us interested people. And, um, and then we also are recording it and we'll be posting it. So feel free, um, both candidates or anyone who would like you to share it. And I know that there'll be forums next week and we'll, we'll publish some information about those that are being held by a, a coalition of non partisan groups. So, um, they couldn't really include us, so here we are doing ours and then they'll have theirs. And, and then people are gonna be voting, I'm so excited. I put mine in the mail today and, um, it kind of gave me tingles and I'm just, um, it's gonna be, it's an exciting time. But anyways, thank you all for being here. I'm going to, um, stop the recording and we'll close the meeting. But I appreciate you supporting the Muskogee County Dems and take care, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.